Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners is called to order. We will begin with a moment of silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, can you do a roll call if there is anyone joining remotely?
I do not see anyone joining us, but just in case if there's anyone joining us by phone, please star six to unmute and let us know you're there. Not hearing anyone, that is roll. Thank you. Number five on your agenda shows the list of upcoming meetings. We do have a business session listed for Thursday. I will defer to the board for that. I do anticipate Commissioner Erb being in, but Commissioner Webster is out on Thursday. I know we had originally planned to just take care of agenda items here, but if you want to hold a meeting, I'll come back from the Serra Summit and run it if you'd like.
Yeah, we're going to be at the Serra Summit.
We may need to decide that at the end of the meeting, just to see how things on the agenda go. Okay. Sounds good. To be determined whether there's a Thursday meeting. Number six is approval of the meeting minutes for September 12th and September 14th. Is there a motion to approve?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make the motion to approve.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We've reached public comment. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Webster?
I do not have one comment today.
Neither. So we'll move to proclamations. There are two proclamations listed for our Altoona Kiwanis Club Citizen of the Year Awards for Barry Halberter and Marlene Halberter. These will be presented at the dinner, so I was not planning to read them in their entirety. But I would put in the form of a motion that we pass those proclamations. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nicole, could you lead us through the consent agenda? Sure. Today's consent agenda is Resolution Number 459. It's the payment of three warrant lists as outlined in your agenda. That does include a payment of invoice to McCarl's Preferred Service, which I understand now that we will have to remove from the agenda. That will not be able to be presented with Commissioner Erb, not here. So that will decrease the warrant of 230926WW $3,479. I can't do quick math, so all of you will have that updated agenda on the web. Ratification of the following two warrant lists as outlined in Item B. It's the ratification of total payroll for the check dated 9/22/23 and the total amount of $846,315.77. Its resignations outlined in Item D. We did have numerous employee status changes, basically changing most of them to temporary employees as they were hired, intended to be hired, but we had a mix-up on the back end that they were put into permanent roles, and that's Item E. Item F is retirements, and G corrections to a date of separation. Ms. Rodriguez did change her date again to October 6, 2023. And that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve with the exception of McCarl's Preferred Services?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make the motion.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will move now to staff reports and special business, and first we have ABCD Corp.
Good morning. Thank you, guys, for having me here this morning. We're here to request an extension to the K O Z, the Keystone Opportunity Zone, extensions of the Bon Secours Parcels and the CLAR Parcel. So the CLAR Parcel is the undeveloped land at the Martin J. Marasco Business Park in Greenfield Township. And then the Bon Secours are undeveloped ground at the former Bon Secours in the city of Altoona.
Commissioner Webster, do you have questions?
I do.
Okay. I'll let you go first.
I just have a couple of questions. So I read through the proposals, and I just am wondering, this is to request 0% tax, which would be an entire 100% exemption for these parcels up through the year designated in each of the two different, and they're two different years designated. One--
They both end in 2030.
Yeah.
They both end on the same day because they're both currently in a program that has zero taxes being paid currently.
Currently.
During the Extension Zone programs, the undeveloped parcels come back on the tax rules as of January 1st.
Right.
Only at what time that you have a occupancy permit on any of those parcels. Then it would go off for the remainder of those seven years. So if someone were to get the occupancy permit on something in year five, they would only get the remaining two years left. The end date is a firm end date. So they're going back onto the tax rules on January 1st.
Okay.
It's a difference between the original Keystone Opportunity Zone--
Right.
--it was tax exempt for the entire time--
Correct.
--during that initial tenure period.
Yes.
During the extension time from the state, they come back on on the 1st.
Until someone develops it.
So they get an occupancy permit, correct.
Right.
And during those last final years, then the three taxing bodies will be exempt from the property taxes.
Okay. So once something is built and an occupancy permit is issued, then the tax, then it will be taxed again, or I'm sorry, not again--
It would be, so the vacant ground is being taxed once the original K O Z expires, which is on December 31st. So January 1st of '24, all of the parcels will go back onto the tax rules at their current undeveloped status, vacant ground.
Right, because they're--
Right. Once there's an occupancy permit, then those taxes are not paid for the remainder of the time until 2030, December 31st of 2030. So they're paying taxes on the undeveloped ground. Once it's built, the remainder of the time is off the tax parcels, off the tax rules, rather.
So even if something is built and an occupancy permit is issued, there's still no tax?
There's taxes until they get the occupancy permit. You are collecting taxes as of January 1st.
Upcoming.
I don't know whether it was always this way, because I never understood it this way, because I've been dealing with it since 2000 pretty much. I think everybody's always understanding was is when it's in a K O Z, it's tax-free. We've done extensions over the years, because I've always involved with making sure sometimes they're ordinances, because we adopted them originally as ordinances, sometimes they're resolutions, and so if we adopted it as an ordinance, then we amend the ordinance to extend it. If we did it as a resolution originally, then we do a resolution, and I keep track of all that to make sure we're doing it the right way. My understanding was always that when we've extended in the past, maybe I misunderstood, that when we extended, it still was tax-free until development occurred. But when we were working on this for this, because the one thing that is unique, the Bon Secours properties actually haven't been tax-free. They've been paying tax at the 2013 tax rate, at 110% of that tax rate. So when we put, when the county put the property in, which was formerly the hospital before it went to Grand Palazzo to be developed, there was a negotiation and the municipalities entered an agreement that said, yeah, we'll give you the K O Z, which gives you these other tax breaks, but for the time period, you've got to pay tax at the 2013 tax rate, 110% of the 2013 tax rate, which is what's been happening. At the end of this year, it would go back on, these ones at Bon Secours will go back on at the regular tax rate.
The assessment rate.
Correct. And then when somebody, let's say next year, let's be practical, next year, somebody builds something, and in 2025, they get an occupancy permit. They've used up a year and a half or two years of the K O Z time period, but for the balance of that period, then it will be tax-free. So they only get the five years instead of seven years, as if they were ready to go today, when you extend.
It seems contra, yeah, contra and true.
Well, the land is, I mean, it's assessed fairly low, so I guess the idea is, we're not going to completely abate it until there's something there of taxable value, and then we're going to give you the benefit. At the time, there's something of taxable value to get you to develop it. Then once you've developed it, and there would be a higher tax rate, we're going to give you the break, but you only get the break for whatever time is remaining. And then, once it's developed, it can't go back, like, they can't come back. Let's say one of these parcels gets developed during this extension, and the other parcel isn't. He can't come back in 2030 and say, we want to extend on both of them. He can only extend if they're allowed to, because the rules seem like they're always changing, on the one that wasn't developed.
It's for vacant ground, is how it's looked at. So we do not have on your list the current, I don't know the tax parcel number, where the Casabella construction is, is not on this list either. So it's just completely vacant ground.
So once something is built, it will be, the assessment office will go out, determine the value based on the 2016 reassessment value, and, but, no taxes will be paid until the time period runs out in order to give them the benefit of the K O Z.
So in 2031, January 2031, it will become taxable at the court.
If there's something there.
If there's something there.
Okay. I understand the proposal. Thank you. That's just odd.
I know it's a long, long way around for a simple answer, if not so simple.
I have some additional questions. Do the municipality and the school district also have to approve this, or is it just--
Correct. They already have.
They already have.
So all three taxing bodies need to approve from, so each school district and each municipality, and then the county only has, obviously, one. So all three.
Okay. So, and then, I guess specifically with the Marasco property, that's down in Clayesburg, correct?
Correct. Greenfield Township.
Near where Sheets has built. Is that correct?
Correct. It's the vacant ground on the left-hand side. So that's where Central States is, the office complex, and the daycare, that's the Marasco Business Park. So it's essentially 92 acres remaining in the business park that are undeveloped.
Okay. And I was, in the resolution, it describes that the condition of the extension, well, let me just scroll up here, so that I get this right. It avers that these properties are still experiencing distress characterized by high unemployment, low investment of new capital, blighted conditions, they're underutilized, obsolete, or abandoned, and they can be either commercial or residential. So that particular one is commercial property.
Correct. It's our business park.
And so this is, we're saying that it is still blighted? Is there a history there of why?
It's underutilized. The community itself has the unemployment right there, but it's a vacant ground that was not utilized before. We did do environmental remediation there. There was a quarry on the entire thing that was remediated at the time of the original construction of the business park during that time, and services were extended for water, sewer, and improvements to that.
Okay. And that property is owned by ABCD Corp., is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. On the ones we're calling the Bon Secours, well, I think that's what they're calling them, Bon Secours Properties--
It was based on, the name for that, by the way, is the original application that got sent and how the state classifies each parcel.
Okay.
That's why ours is CLAR, but we call it now Marasco, just for clarification.
Correct. Okay. I was a little bit confused, and Sylvester Carn and I were looking at the parcel numbers, because our parcel viewer shows various things here. So who owns these properties?
So there's different LLCs. There's, the majority of them, I think, at the end of the day are owned by Jeff Long Enterprises. There's different LLCs, so there's Union Square Town Homes, which would be, I can read off the parcel numbers if you need them, they would be, you need them right off.
So I guess--
Or you want me to provide the--
Maybe if you could just tell me, like, some of them are residential and some of them are commercial, is that correct?
Right now, they're all undeveloped, and so all of them can be either.
And usually, there's a zoning designation.
There's zoning, correct. But, I mean, within the Grand Palazzo itself, it's residential, and then there are businesses operating in on the first floor.
Gotcha. So it's mixed use.
Say mixed use, rather.
Yeah. Okay. And these are all vacant currently, like, no structures?
There's no structures on any of them currently. The only one from the original one that had it was the former hospital itself and the connecting property. From the original application, we did remove additional properties that are wooded, that are in other places, that have other operations going on that we did not include as well, those parcels from the first tenure of K O Z. It was a longer list.
Okay. And then I think in the resolution, it's not just the property tax, like, the property tax is what affects us that's exempt.
Correct.
But the state actually, my understanding is, if someone's developing a property in one of these, they apply to D C E D, and then they would either approve or not approve. And that actually exempts not just their property tax here, but business gross receipts tax, privilege tax, tax on earned income received by resident, tax on net profits of a qualified business, mercantile license tax, tax on occupancy or use, and sales and use tax. That's quite a lot of things.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the state's definition of the K O Z.
Right. So we can't really quantify what the actual benefit is to whoever would do this?
You mean, like, monetary?
Right.
It's, like, project by project. We could probably go backwards and look from the time that someone was going to construct, from the materials in there, and the operations within it, as a backwards look, to forward forecast without knowing the exact project that is going to happen, and the operations that we're going to be going on within there as far as the sales and use tax, and the rest of those that are in there, without knowing the exact operation, what they're going to construct, how many people they're going to employ, what the revenues are, what their model is.
Even the square footage of the building, any of that, yeah.
Correct. And then what they would be saving based on the reassessment portion. We could certainly do a backwards look on something like a Central States in Greenfield Township.
So, I mean, I guess bottom line, though, it's not ultimately the commissioners who decide whether they receive the benefit, it's someone at the state.
Correct.
Okay.
They have to apply yearly and get certified yearly, and then work with the Department of Revenue and D C E D. For a year, every year, they have to provide a document, certify, and provide reports back to the state for those tax savings.
Years ago, I tried to limit the resolution to the real estate tax, because my view of it is, why are we putting language in there that we don't tax these things? But the state's like, we have this box we have to check, and everybody's resolution has to look the same. So I was like, this doesn't make sense, because we don't have an income tax. But that's why you have all that listed, even though reality only affects your real estate tax.
We've been told, in essence, it's just outlining what the statute is and what the program is.
So, and this is probably a dumb question, but we have a LERTA that also covers that property.
The city.
The whole city, yeah. So they would, but that would just, so if it were just the LERTA, it would just be real estate tax?
Correct.
But because it's a K O Z, it could be potentially more than that? Is that--
Correct.
Am I understanding that correctly? Okay.
Well, the other thing, too, to be fair, if you had a LERTA, with the LERTA, if they develop towards the end of this K O Z, and it expires, like, maybe they only get two years in an example when we were walking through that at the K O Z, the LERT is a five-year, where they would get reduced taxes on the new construction, so they still have a hand-in-glove kind of mutual benefit that could exist. It just depends on the timing.
Thank you. I just have one, oops. I just have one follow-up then. So at this point, taxes are paid on these vacant parcels at the old prior to assessment values, correct?
You mean, today or starting January 1st?
Or, I'm sorry, starting January 1st.
Correct. They will pay, they will pay the taxes that are listed on the--
Right. But once something is built and an occupancy permit is issued, then no tax will be paid on the land or the building until the 2030, or whichever date, the expiration of this.
The expiration date of the zone, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that was the clarification I was looking for. Thanks.
Yep.
And I guess--
Is it more difficult or easier?
Well, fundamentally, so, I understand ABCD coming for the property they own. What, and this is probably just my ignorance, but you're allowed by virtue of being who you are to come for private property owners and ask for this?
Correct. So the application goes through Southern Alleghenies Planning and Development Corporation. So how it works is each county Economic Development Corporation would help assemble these resolutions, help make these conversations at each taxing body, and present the information forward. The application for our region goes through Southern Alleghenies, and they will put in the extension request directly to D C E D.
Okay.
And they work with, they work, so if each of their six counties has a K O Z, an Economic Development person would be there to do that, and then each one has a coordinator that would make sure that each year, if someone's available, they would get a certification, work back to Southern Alleghenies, and back up to D C E D and revenue.
Okay. So, and I might have missed it, but--
So we're not individually representing just our--
Yes.
We're acting as an economic developer, then we just happen to own one of the parcels this time around.
Yeah. So, and I might have missed it, but, because I was writing, but, so someone at Southern Alleghenies is the person who helps them with their yearly application and submitting all that?
Correct.
Okay. And that actually solves a mystery for me when I was looking at the D C E D website and everything was under Brandon Carson's name, I was very confused. Okay. So--
Apparently, they have it updated.
Yes.
Yes, it's Janice and Lee locally.
Okay.
Can provide that updated information if you need it.
Okay. I think that answers all of my questions. Are you comfortable with making a motion at this point, or do we want to come back Thursday?
Well, I can't come back Thursday.
Right. But I'm just saying, should we move today?
So should we move ahead on this? And we have to do this if we're going to continue to have the K O Z zones, correct?
Correct.
Yes. All right. Then I'll make the motion that we approve. Do we do them individually?
I think we have to do them separately, individually, please.
The Bon Secours parcel first, then.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And then I will make a motion that we approve the resolution for the CLAR parcel.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, thank you to the commissioners, Nicole, and Nathan, everyone, for all their time on this. Thank you.
Okay. Trina, for Social Services.
Good morning. We're requesting a submission of a fiscal year 20 revision of the project scope. There's no funds that are going to be modified at this time. What this is, is just a project scope. Originally, Innes Township, whenever they prepared their 20 application, they scoped it as a new restroom facility that they were going to use with their C V funds, their CARES money. That is no longer an option. So Innes Township is requesting to utilize the fiscal year 20 C D B G funds. Instead of purchasing a new restroom, they're going to upgrade the equipment in the existing restrooms at the park. There will be six, so all the six existing restrooms located at Bellwood Innes Recreation Park, that does include the two at the pole, will receive touchless equipment, that's flush, automatic flush systems, towels, dispensers, those types of things. So all this is, is just a re-scope, and no money's actually being reduced or increased at this time.
Okay. Any questions? Is this all of the restrooms, then, at those facilities?
Correct. Right, at the Bellwood Innes Recreation Park. And as you said, it does include the two at the pole.
Thank you.
In the interest of moving everything today, I'll make a motion to approve the request as described.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is G I S, Grant Mills.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here to request approval of a quote from Document Solutions for a new plotter totaling This plotter will replace our current broken plotter in the G I S office, and it'll also consolidate plotter usage between the Assessment and G I S offices. It will be paid through the Record Improvements Fund.
Questions? Christmas is coming a little early for Grant.
Well, without, it's not much you can do, right?
No, that's right.
I will make a motion to approve the request. Is there a second?
Mr. Webster, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item D is prison, and Deputy Morgan Weitzel. Good morning.
The three resolutions we're asking approval for are related to the facilitation of the Medicaid Assistant Treatment Services for individuals incarcerated, or MATS services, which are for individuals incarcerated who are currently undergoing opioid treatment for the opioid use disorder prior to and during incarceration. The first one is request for approval of a quote received from the Norex Group for the purchase of the items listed, five steel intel stations, which will ensure privacy and individuality during the treatment. The cost for those purchases from Norex Group are $14,880.99. Should I do them all, three?
We do have them in separate resolutions, so if you want to take them individually. Is there any questions about the first item?
I think just generally, I want to just mention on all of these items that the warden and the deputy wardens have worked closely with Prime Care as the MATS distributor, distributor or program operator, to purchase what is going to be needed, and then eventually, a contract will come from Prime Care to actually provide the treatment. So we're getting the facility set up, so all of these are hardware items that are going to be facility upgrades.
Okay. Any questions based on that info?
No, this is just a continuation of the ultimate mandate--
Right.
--for us to provide the services.
Correct. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the first quote?
I'll make a motion to approve the first request.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The second resolution is requesting approval of a quote received from Park Security Cameras for the purchase of the items listed, the Luna Surveillance, 310 Series 8 channel and VR1, and the Five Lumina Surveillance 420 Series, four megapixel dome cameras, and the technician labor, for a total cost of $4,711.22.
You are going to ask, I would imagine, or you would want to know, that we do have the security project that's happening at the prison right now for upgrades to the cameras. This project was not included in the large project that's upgrading the entire system at the prison because of the timing of the program and the timing of the bid specifications that went out for that. So this will be a separate standalone system, and it'll be able to be monitored separately and-- and however they do that in the prison is up to the wardens and deputy wardens, but this will stand alone and is not going to be integrated, but that's okay, because it's its own, it's its own program. Any other questions on that one?
My only question, and I forgot to ask it on the last one, did you get bids from different companies for these? Did you inquire?
Yes. So, I will say that the first one is the, those are the seats, those are the only, that's a sole, sole source, source provider, yeah, yeah, that's a very specific item. The bids are, I do believe they did get additional bids from Empire, and maybe even, I'm drawing a blank, Batway? Batway, thank you, thank you. And then the last one is Lowe's items for minimal dollars, so I don't know that we did on that one, but...
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the, the security cameras?
Well, yes, Commissioner Webster, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I will second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
I'll make aye.
Thank you, and the final one is, of course, the Lowe's items, which are wires, et cetera, needed for data cable and modular plugs, and the cost for that is $172.81.
Okay, any questions on that one? I will say, when I saw Lowe's, I thought that's, I assumed it was not the hardware store and thought it was something else, but it is in fact Lowe's, so, learned something new, okay. Is there a motion to approve the quote received from Lowe's?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make that motion.
I will second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Sue from Tax Claim.
Good morning. I'm here to request approval of four title search agreements to have the necessary title searches completed on the properties that weren't sold at our upset sale last week.
Did you have a final count, Sue?
We had 82 properties that were not sold and 13 overbid.
Thank you, that was going to be my question as well.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I need to seal it.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the four judicial title searches, search agreements, is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Any other discussion? I will note that this was reviewed by our Conflict Council instead of Solicitor Carn, since E D Black is one of the people with an agreement, so just to note that for the record. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
So, next we have Public Works, and Paul.
Good morning.
Requesting approval for the submission of a zoning and building code review application to Halliday's Borough for the construction of a salt storage building at the Highway Yard, and the submission of the application for erosion and sedimentation control to the Bell County Conservation District for the salt storage building construction.
Any questions?
No. I do, I know about this.
Yes.
I do think this was a project that was brought up maybe in our very first meeting, so it's nice to see it's moving along, so...
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the submission?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make the motion.
I will second that, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks.
Finally, we have Commissioners Office and Allison.
Hello, I'm here today to request approval of an amendment to Project Supplement Number 2023-1 to the grant cooperation agreement by, between the County of Blair and Alleghenies Broadband, Inc., for the Crow's Nest project, the wireless expansion project, extending the original required completion date from September 30th, 2023, to January 30th, 2024, for the project as set forth within Section 4 of said supplement.
Okay, any questions? I, this, we are just extending the deadline, that's all we're doing.
Correct.
And can you remind me, I was trying to scroll down to see if it's in here, but was this in American Rescue Plan funding, or where was the funding from this?
Yes.
So we're still within that deadline for using the funds, yes.
Oh, yes.
All right, that's all I had. I will make a motion to approve the amendment, is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we will adjourn, and the meeting Thursday will be canceled.
Thank you.
Thank you.